Meeting, we did change our meeting this month because of we're going to be gone to convention and then we have Thanksgiving and it was it's too difficult to try to come back in one day and get ready for a meeting so we're having a different time but I think it works great. Special items, approval of agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Pat Welsh, is there a second? Second by Teresa Lawson, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all in favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Special items, individuals to address the board, is there anyone here to address the board on an agenda item at this time? Seeing there's no one, we'll move on to student celebrations, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, I always like celebrating and you can tell when you have a crowd full of students, that's exactly what we're gonna do. We're gonna start with some elementary students, 5th grade students, we're now in our 4th year of the TCS Birthday Card Contest. It's become an annual tradition, it started with the high school digital arts students and then it went to Farah Elementary, Robert E. Lee Elementary, and now Bel Air Elementary. Mr. Nagel, the art teacher who's with us tonight, he spearheaded this effort at Bel Air as students worked to create birthday cards for us to give out to employees. Mr. Nagel provided us with 10 birthday cards, the Board of Education Leadership Team and Central Office Team had to judge them. There were no names on the cards, just numbers that were there, and they had to select the top 5, and we have our top 5 winners with us here this evening, and so we've got 2 of our top 5? Alright, if those 2 members will come forward and grab your birthday card, all of you in the audience can see the 5 birthday card covers, if you'll grab your birthday card and if you'll turn around and share it with the group. I do want to recognize all 5 winners, we have Kason Anderson, Hudson Johnson, Chesney Phelps, Jeremiah Brooks, and Stephen Bingham. These creations with special messages inside the cards will be shared with our employees beginning this month and continue for the rest of the year. Can we give these artists a round of applause?
Thank you so much, and Mr. Nagel, thank you, if you wanna grab the other cards and share those with our other artists, I would love that.
Hey, hey, y'all turn around, I wanna see what you want to do. Awesome.
And there are the completed birthday cards there for them to share with parents so they can see that beautiful message inside.
Thank you.
Yes, one for each of them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you all.
Alright, one more round of applause, here we go. Next up, we have 4 Telahoma cross-country teams that we wanna recognize, and I wanna start with the high school teams first, and Mr. Welsh has certificates, and I'm gonna start with the girls team, we're gonna call you up by name, if you'll come forward, and you're all gonna be in this area ultimately, facing forwards, everyone can see your beautiful faces, so for the girls team, LEU Line, if you'll just come forward, if you're here, Sarah Aiken, Jordan Spry, Bella Rivera, Lexi Lester, Audrey Sarabi, Addie Colvin, So I wanna tell you a little bit about the girls' cross-country team at the high school, they were regional runner-ups this year, and they had 5 regional medalists, and if you're a medalist, when I call your name, I just want you to acknowledge with a raised hand, so everybody knows who you are, our 5 regional medalists were LEU Line, Brynlee Duncan, Lexi Lester, Sarah Aiken, and Audrey Sarabi. This team placed 8th in the state, and have been state qualifiers for 3 years in a row. Can we give them a woo-woo? Alright, very good. I do want to recognize 2 others, and Ms. Harrison has a token for LEU Line and Brynlee Duncan, they walked away with a mid-state cross-country association, all mid-state honor, let's hear it for those athletes as well. Alright, you wanna get a picture with them, if you all will smile. Mr. Welsh, I know you need in that picture.
Me?
Yes, and let's get our coaches in the picture.
Yes.
Come on, coaches, let's get in the picture, Mr. Lester, Ms. Allen, we're all friends and family, let's...
Can we put them right here?
Stand here.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's hear it for the THS girls' cross-country team. Similarly, I'd like to call the THS boys, Team Forward, 1 at a time, and if you're here, please come forward, see Mr. Welsh for your certificate, Braden Johnson, Will Swiger, Brady Welch, Dakota Call, Kirk Tips, Lucas Price, Jackson Ices, Major Montoy, Everett Tinsley.
Sorry.
Ah. And we'll make sure the coaches get extra certificates. So the team you are looking at right now, this team placed 3rd in regionals with Braden Johnson and Lucas Price meddling, if the 2 of you would raise your hands, make sure we see you, Braden Johnson, Lucas Price, while at state, they placed 26th, it was the first time that THS had a cross-country team going to state since 2005. Wow, let's give them a round of applause. And once again, let's get our coaches to join in, and Mr. Welsh, for a photograph. Good stuff to celebrate.
You got a lot better hair.
Alright, congratulations, y'all. So that is 2 of the 4 cross-country teams, now we're going to recognize our middle school teams, and I'm going to start with the middle school girls' team first, and similarly, you all will come forward and get your certificate from Ms. Robinson. Katie Grace Nichols, Addison Vincent, Sophie Call, Juliana Ices, Hannah Aiken, Claire Alright, let me tell you something special about this team, they became the sectional champions for the first time ever, boom, boom, and finished 3rd in the state, congratulations, So the future is bright, come on, coaches, let's come on down. Future is bright, for sure. Excellent job, excellent job, and now we will finish this cross-country celebration, and by the way, I am so very impressed with these athletes, I would like to enjoy running, I really have it in my head, I would like to enjoy running, I haven't quite gotten there yet, and maybe I need to work out with y'all, and y'all can help turn me around, where I love it. Alright, so for our middle school boys, Lincoln Bitten, Wyatt Dorsett, William Nichols, Jeffrey Shrum, Jamison Zamotis, Owen Sarabi, and Davis Roberson. Alright, let's have these coaches come join them right now, and let me tell you a little bit about this team. This team placed 6th at sectionals and finished 11th at state. Lincoln Bitten did an amazing job by winning the 5th place state medal, and Ms. Harrison has a special surprise for him, please join me in congratulating this team, alright. And let's give 3 claps and a whoosh to all teams, and it goes like this.
Whoosh.
Ready, here we go.
Whoosh.
Alright, very well done, congratulations to all, thank you. And coaches, job well done.
Yes, thank you, thank you, coaches, thank you, students, you're fabulous, and thank you, parents, and I know that you love a good board meeting, and you can watch these on television because they're recorded, but you are welcome to leave now.
Academic update, Dr. Stevens and Dr. Boone.
Yes, so each month, we are having a variety of updates, you have heard from Dr. Boone earlier this year, and she talked about academic achievement, tonight, she's gonna talk about growth as it relates to our state summative tests. I do want to acknowledge that originally, our CTE director was going to be at the November meeting, when we changed it, it impacts her schedule, so she'll be joining us in January, but you'll still see her twice, and we're also gonna have Dr. Tredway, but let's first introduce Dr. Boone and take it away, tell us all about how did Telahoma City Schools do with growth.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, good evening, I am really happy to be able to share Telahoma City Schools' growth, just like I did with achievement, although I was not here last year, I do get the privilege of sharing the hard work, which is just a proud moment for Telahoma. You should have the data in front of you, Ms. Stidham provided, before we get started looking at the data, I'll review real quickly why growth is important to us, growth is a comparison to a prior performance of either TCAP, EOC, or ACT, it allows us to measure whether our students are growing at similar rates as other students in Tennessee schools. Unlike achievement, student demographics have no weight on the outcomes in growth, it is truly, and every student has the ability to truly maintain, gain ground, or fall behind a state expected growth measure. So digging into data, there are 5 levels that you can obtain in growth, level 3 is at expectations, that is where we want all students to achieve to, it means that they have been able to maintain the rate of growth as expected by the state. Any level below that 3 is going to mean that students did not meet that state expectation, any levels above that 3 means that students exceeded state expectations. First, we have English Language Arts, 3rd through 8, we have the subgroups, which are our demographics, as well as all students, 5 out of 8 of our subgroups in Telahoma met or exceeded expectations in growth, looking at all students, which includes all subgroups, we had a level 3, which is again, meeting expectations. For math, 3rd through 8, subgroups and all students, we had 7 out of 7 that met, actually exceeded, the amounts of growth that is expected, had 1 that met it, and all subgroups were a level 5 in math. In science, next page, 3rd through 8, all subgroups, we had 8 out of 8 of our subgroups that met or exceeded expectations, all subgroups together received a level 3 in growth. Social studies, 3rd through 8, all subgroups and all students, 7 out of 8 met or exceeded expectations, while all subgroups together combined received a level 4. I did a comparison of our growth from 22 to 23 at the bottom, first, math, 4 through 8 grades, the color blue is indicated in that column for 23 to show that 4 out of 5 of those grade levels had improvement of the levels of growth that they obtained, same with ELA from 22 to 23, we had 4 out of 5 of those grades improve their level of growth, as well as all of them except 1 met or exceeded, excuse me, and 1 was meeting that expectation. When we go to EOCs, we have several different content areas looked at in our EOCs, we had 5 out of 7 that met or exceeded, and 1 of those actually moved to a level 5, so 3 out of 5 of our EOC subject areas were exceeding with level 5 scores. ACT is something for Telahoma City to be very proud of, when you look at growth and being a level 3 as expected from the state, because reading moved from 22 to 23 to a level 5, making all 4 subject areas of ACT, as well as the composite, be a level 5 in growth for students, which is phenomenal. Moving to across grade levels for growth, 4 through 8, we have grades 4th through 8, and then a domain of across grade levels, 4 out of 5 of those 4 through 8 met or exceeded expectations, and across all grade levels for English Language Arts, we were a level 4. For math, 3rd through 8, across grades 4 through 8, we had 3 out of 5 that met or exceeded expectations, and across all grades, we were a level 5 in our math. EOC, again, in a different format, includes all of our maths, ELA, Biology, and History, again, had 5 out of 7 that met or exceeded expectations of growth, and again, ACT in another format showing you how our TVAS data is projected to the community, we had all 5 receive level 5s in their growth for students. And I'm sure that you saw on social media what our fabulously talented Zach Birdsong met, created, and shared, that we were a level 5 as a composite for a district, and we were level 5 in academic growth for literacy and numeracy, as well as numeracy, so I just wanna say congratulations to all of the Telahoma City's teachers and students and families and staff that worked together to produce this growth, I'm excited to be able to sit here next year and share the similar results with you, and hopefully some more improvements like they did with their growth in Telahoma, very proud moment to celebrate.
Excellent, thank you so much. Moving to TBA update, Dr. Stevens and Dr. Tredway.
Yes, so one of our priorities in our strategic plan is virtual programming, and as a result of that, we certainly want to provide you with updates.
Oops, I'm taking my thing with me. Sorry, sorry. I forgot I was hooked up.
We welcome Dr. Tredway, his first year as the TBA Director, and he has an update for you about all things happening in our virtual school.
And so, really appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening, it's been a pleasure to be part of your district, so just really enjoying it, getting to know everyone, and just really impressed by the vision that this board has in regards to its virtual learning program, so just wanted to share some numbers with you. Right now, we have 93 students enrolled as flex students, and to define a flex student, a flex student is a student who is enrolled full-time at Telahoma High School, but can take up to 4 classes a year at TBA and still be a full-time student at Telahoma High School, does that make sense? So they can take up to 4 classes, and it could be a multitude of classes, some of them choose to, you know, they may take a personal finance, or they may take pre-cow through Arizona State University, a multitude of classes that they can take, so 93 students participate in that. We have 51 full-time students, as you know, we added 8th grade this year, and we've seen our 8th grade enrollment numbers continue to climb, I'll talk to you a little bit about our recruiting efforts towards the end of my discussion, and how we're doing there, so we currently have 51 full-time students. We serve a total of 144 students, speaking with Dr. English when I arrived, our goal was 150, actually, our max was 150, and so we're just short of that, which leaves a little bit of room for growth and emergencies, which do happen, from time to time, we have situations that a student may have to join us unexpectedly, and we're happy to do that and help the student and the family out in that capacity. Those 144 students are enrolled in 378 classes, so that's, I mean, that, when I saw that number, I thought, wow, that's a lot, some days, it feels like a lot, because it is a lot, right? So those students are enrolled in 378, and we could not do that without the faculty that we have, we have 17 adjunct faculty members, 1 lives in Mariville, I just recommended Dr. Stevens, to Dr. Stevens in the Human Resources Department yesterday, a teacher from Williamson County, so word is getting out, and so we're able to draw teachers, and so that's a really good thing, it provides that teacher flexibility, they can still teach their normal classes during the day, and then on the evenings and the weekends, they can prepare and grade for our students, so that's outstanding. We have 4 full-time staff members, and as I previously noted, we have 18 students enrolled at Arizona State University, some of that, we have an MOU with Arizona State University that permits that, and all of those students may pay, I think it's $400 at the end of that course, if they choose to have that converted to college credit, right now, Telahoma City Schools pays for that particular class, so we're very thankful for that, the students are too, they don't know how thankful they are, but they're thankful, they're thankful, when they start paying themselves, they'll be very thankful, so the kids do exceptionally well in those classes. We also boast 6 early graduates, so out of senior class of 12, we were gonna graduate 6 of them early, and 5 of those 6 have plans to immediately start either in college, or they wanna start their career field. And then finally, we recently mailed 83 recruitment letters, we believe, and I'm just gonna be frank, that we can offer a much better education than a lot of places out there, and many of those families that we call, we sent 83 letters out, and then we had a virtual meeting last Thursday night, I think we had 6 people attend that meeting, and I think I've, today, we got our 7th phone call, and I've got a couple of meetings scheduled with parents tomorrow. The majority of people don't know we exist, and so the challenge is, is just to continue to spread the work, spread the word of the good work that we're doing, so we'll continue to do that.
And this recruitment effort is specifically to families within the Telahoma City School District, so we are not recruiting outside of our district, we are recruiting inside, and so we have a list of homeschool families, homeschool families must enroll with the school district, and that has enabled Dr. Tredway to focus some of his efforts to those families, we focus specifically on 8 through junior in high school, hoping that maybe some will join us next semester, sounding like some are going to be joining us.
My goal is to have 6 to 8 students join us in January, and then we'll have a real, another big push in March and April, maybe even as early as February, I have to speak with the high school counselors and find out what time registration starts, how many seats we have available, but the cool thing about TBA is, our seat count is flexible, we can adjust it, so it creates room and opportunities for students.
So even within our district, there's a, I guess, the word hasn't gotten out even within it on this opportunity, okay?
Yeah, they're actually very, very excited to learn about it, we're doing our best to do cold calls, as you can imagine, to cold call that many folks takes a little while, we had hoped, honestly, if I get a robo-call, it's going to voice-bell anyway.
They're gonna say you have a hard time getting me to...
So the best way to do it is to just make individual calls, but it does take a little while, obviously, Dr. Stevens gives me other responsibilities during the day, so it's hard, I'd say we're about a third of the way down, but we'll continue to work on that.
I've had 2 different families that have talked to me, just I've just run into them, like out in the community, and they, their children had never been enrolled in our schools, and they were both homeschool families, and have really loved homeschooling, and they have students that are in the program, and they're just loving it, for them, it's a perfect combination.
It is, and that's why, that's the word, the message that we want to get out, is we think we can partner really well for you, and of course, if you live in our school zone, there's no charge, so that's the other message we wanna get.
Now, how many are 8th graders?
So...
12.
12.
12, okay, 12.
And actually...
That's a pretty good, pretty good number.
Actually, we're gonna, later this week or early next week, I expect to enroll 2 more for January, so we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do you plan to extend to 7th grade next year? Yes, so next year is 7th grade, then 6th, and then I believe we might consider a grouping, so on our strategic plan, it's very methodical, what will happen this spring is Dr. Tredway will have to apply to the state, so we have a school number, but you have to tell what grades are you changing to, and what is your number that you are believing you will serve, so each year, we're stepping into that.
What's the term that the TWS double A uses to classify student that's homeschooled but under your jurisdiction? You know, there's a label.
I don't know that label, do you, Dr. Tredway? Doesn't come to my mind.
If you have this label, then it allows you to participate in extra curricular activities as far as TWS double A.
So I do know that prior to my arrival, and this summer, I worked with Coach Olive to make sure that any kid that previously was a homeschool kid, that enrolled in TBA could participate at Telahoma High School, or if they were a middle school student, could participate at their school of zone, east or west.
They are, they are under your jurisdiction if they're going to TBA.
Yes.
Right.
I can check with Coach Olive and get back with you, I don't...
No, I'm not, I'm wondering how many are out there that aren't, that are homes, that are homeschooled but are not, under director's supervision, I believe, refers, if they have to take year-end test, at least they have, or some other factors.
Yeah, so they have to register as homeschoolers, and there are certain years that they must take the standardized assessment, so we are aware of their presence, they come in to our schools and take that assessment, in terms of participating in athletics, there are some very specific deadlines, and they have to meet those deadlines, say August, and they have to provide transcripts and all the information that's needed, that runs through our athletic director and me, and so we have families that participate in that each year, several sports.
Do we have any idea how many homeschoolers not under your jurisdiction are there?
Well, unless they're enrolled with us, I mean, there would be no way to know, we know the number, and we have about 280 that are enrolled with us as homeschoolers, now that's not all that grade band, that extends K-12, but if they have not enrolled, there would not be a way for us to know who they are.
That'd be another group to target again, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Homeschool families are very connected and communicative in general terms, and I do believe, once, we added 6 homeschool students last school year, as we are doing the targeted recruitment to just make them aware of the options and opportunities that exist, I believe that word is going to trickle out, particularly when you get into high school content, and you need very prescriptive licenses, and the courses are extremely challenging, it is a wonderful option that may marry well with how they educate currently.
Thought I might have, is there's a couple of churches that are doing co-op work, 1 day or 2 days a week, I'm wondering if we could get ahold of those churches and find out, are there other, are the students that are, that are going to the co-op, to the church, but not under the director's supervision, that be candidates to give.
I do wanna share, while Dr. Tredway is here, we are revamping and adding a responsibility to his role, we have our ALC program housed at the CSS Building, our ALC program, our alternative school setting, serves our 7th through 12th grade students, who may need that placement for a specific amount of time. Dr. Tredway is now the site supervisor over that program, so all referrals to that program are now going through him, he is participating in transition, he is also the administrator, interacting with any difficulties or challenges or unique situations that arise, he's evaluating the staff, so we have a more connected feeling to that program and to a school leader, he is obviously a licensed administrator, and he's... He is obviously a licensed administrator and he's doing really well. We're going to be initiating a new program very soon that he's meeting with students about, which will enable students at ALC if they meet certain criteria and go through certain programs to return back to school, to their homeschool. So we've met with all the principals, talked to parents and students are next on the list. We hope to begin this after Thanksgiving. So he's doing great work in that area as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Wonderful from both of you. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Motion by Gigi Robison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Didom? Very good. Thank you. Moving to unfinished business, Buildings and Grounds report, Teresa Lawson.
Okay, we met, Building and Grounds committee met on November 3rd, Friday afternoon. And we met with Pat Tindman, Jim Johnson, Dr. Stevens, Dr. Dillahay, and Hank Jordan. And I'll start.
Always forget that. Sorry. I think my voice carries though. Anyway, I mean, it does now. Okay, so I'll go back. We met Friday afternoon and our committee did. And I'll begin with THS. Updates were provided on the gym floor replacement scheduled for June and July of 2024, so this summer, and on the library conversion to the College and Career Readiness Center. Additionally, discussion on potential new projects such as adding a green space at Wilkins Stadium and replacing the gym bleachers were discussed and evaluated. At East Middle School, the final repairs on the fire suppression line were completed in October. Train is expected, is scheduled to finalize the HVAC replacement on December 27th through the 29th. The Building and Grounds Group toured the EMS library and listened to Dr. Dillahay talk about potential improvements to this space. And the members discussed next steps to help the committee in evaluating these potential improvements to the EMS library space. And other, we have a Kearl Construction has begun making modifications to the administrative building entrance, as I think everyone has noticed out here. Sidewalk has been added to the back of the building, connecting the Red Cross parking lot sidewalk to the rear entry of the building. The work on the front of the office started on November 6th and is expected to take approximately 30 days. That's all I have. Patrick, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I thought the call to meet at East was smarter.
Very, yes. And I'd like to, going forward, I'd like to meet at different locations like we had before in the past.
Especially if it's something that's going to be like a remodel and you're sitting there seeing what's going to happen.
And you can get a visual of it. And that was one thing about the East Library because we definitely need some upgrades at that facility, especially in the library. So anything else? Any questions?
But green space at the stadium, where have we, where would we put that or where were we, what's the vision there?
Between the end of the stadium seating and the baseball, I'll call it house facility, that green space that goes down, bringing the fence to the sidewalk. So you know how it pushes all the way up to the track? Yeah, so use that whole space. And you'll see the maintenance department has already pulled up some paving that was there. And we're going to stop right before a pipe to curl that fencing. So if you drive by there, you'll be able to see kind of how that goes around. The intent of that, we have students playing in end zones and it is going to be more helpful and safe for students to be in a space where they can play and be appropriately supervised.
Very good.
Yeah, I did notice that they had put up a little fence there.
Well, I noticed that in the white game too.
Yes, I'm sure. Yes.
When you get into the.
Which is a good, I mean, it's a good thing. It's a good, it's a good thing. Great report. Thank you. Thank you very much, maintenance. New business district report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, so last month, I shared the news that we had two TCST members earning Hall of Fame recognition. Both Derek Rowe and John Olive have earned this honor in their respective fields. Mr. Rowe's induction into the Aviation Hall of Fame happened on November 4th and John Olive's induction is slated for January of 2024, as I recall. We have another TCST member who on November 11th was inducted into the 2023 National Wrestling Hall of Fame for his lifetime service to wrestling, and that's Bob Callison, our high school wrestling coach and PE wellness teacher at THS. So I wanted to say a special congratulations to him as well. He's already earned that state recognition in Arizona and now he is a national inductee. Impressive. And today, we heard that Telahoma City Schools has been named a 2023 Tennessee Arts Academy Partner for committing funds to quality arts professional learning for our teachers. Only 20 school districts out of 146 have been named to this list. And we know this week-long professional learning, which Atticus talked to us about the last month when he was here, for our arts educators as well as our general educators, is powerful and it shows up throughout the school year in their classrooms. And lastly, I want to talk a little bit about something we spent a lot of time talking about last year, third grade retention law. So toward the end of November, Dr. Boone and I will be conducting meetings at each of our elementary schools to discuss the third grade retention law and what changes there are to the process this year because there are some changes. To ensure our families are up to date, aware of the law and the changes, there are two assessments that really matter in the life of a third grader as it relates to retention. The first one is TCAP, which we've known about. The second one, which is new this year, is AmesWeb. AmesWeb is an assessment suite we added this year in third grade so we could take advantage of this possible assessment that would promote students. So in terms of AmesWeb, if a student scores at the 50th percentile in this suite of assessments, and there are three assessments, oral reading fluency, which is two one-minute reads, and it's reading accuracy, really easy, real quick. There's a vocabulary assessment that is students determining what word fits in within context as they're reading. What word is it out of, say, four choices? Not timed, but focused on vocabulary. And then we have reading comprehension, which is exactly what you picture it to be. It's another untimed. So you take those three assessments and then there'll be this composite percentile. We are hopeful for students who reach 50th or above, they are automatically promoted. Does not matter what the TCAP outcome is. So we've got a couple of things to work with and talk about. So with this change, we, number one, want to make sure everyone's aware of this change and we want parents to know how they might help their students in terms of what they can do at home, especially with oral reading fluency and just practicing that reading aloud within a minute of time, just different tips. Our meetings will be 5:30 at each of the schools and I'm going to share these dates with you and we'll be publishing these dates as well. I do want to say that parents are welcome to attend at their school, but if that date and time is a conflict, come to another one because we are giving the same information. So again, 5:30. The first one is Monday, November 27th at Bel Air. The next one is Tuesday, November 28th at East Lincoln. Then we have Monday, December 4th, Robert E. Lee, and Monday, December 11th at Farrah. Each are 5:30. Parents are welcome. Board members are welcome. Communities welcome because this is something, even our reading buddies may want to come hear what's happening now. Again, parents are welcome to attend any session. And lastly, as we approach Thanksgiving, a time for us to be reflective and be thankful, I want to share some very special thanks. I want to say thanks to our students who bring energy and enthusiasm every day to our schools. They are ready to learn. To our teachers and staff, I'm thankful for you. You work tirelessly to make a difference for students as you prepare your lessons and prepare our students for their future. To our parents who and families who partner with us, I am thankful for you. You make a difference in your child's educational journey. To our business, city and community partners, I am thankful for you. Without you, we could not do as much and as well to meet the needs of our students. And to each of you sitting around this table, I'm thankful for you. I'm thankful for what you do in your gift of time and service for children and for our community. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I also wanted was going to be giving thanks to everyone. And I also was going to be congratulating, but since you've already done that, I will have to share something else. Since we are headed to convention, I feel it's necessary that I share with you how I represented at my first state convention. I bought new outfits. We all know how important that is. So I had three new, I thought they were the cutest outfits in the whole world. I'll never forget it. I had on a blue shirt and a brown jumper and blue tights. And the tights are important. And I had worn them all day thinking I'm looking cute. I went to the vendors. I didn't just go to one vendor. I went to every vendor. I mean, there's probably like 75. I was able to even drop my name in the box because I had gone to every vendor. They had a tailgating party with hot dogs and stuff. I ain't doing it all. And I was so excited and a lady came up to me, because you know, we wear name tags, and she said, Telahoma City Schools? And I'm like, yes, do you know? And she said, your dress is tucked in your tights. So it wasn't just a little tuck. You know, I'm thinking maybe it was just a little tuck. No, you all, I really represented. I represented all the way that day. I was so excited.
That shows how much the vendor wanted to say. And he would not point it out. There's probably 140 of them in there.
Oh, there's a lot. And I went to every single one of them. But I had been other places too, in, you know, the Opryland Hotel. I mean, I had been all over the place and so may you all represent just as well as I did this week.
Or better.
Or better. I don't know. I just, I was so excited that she said Telahoma City Schools. I thought, oh, she knows someone. We're going to connect. She knows someone. Oh, no, but she knows me now. Anyhow, I obviously have no shame. City Board Liaison Report, Daniel Berry.
It's been a while since I've been with y'all. Had a football season, shout out to my Bel Air Bees. We didn't do as well as we did last year, but we had fun and everybody came back and we hope to see them next year. Couple of updates. Sergeant Willie Young, well, he wasn't a sergeant until yesterday. He's your SRO at the high school. Big congratulations to him. Willie's been doing an incredible job. Now he's taken on kind of a bigger task with the SROs. I believe we still have an SRO that we need to hire for the high school and that is active. That'll help take some of that load off of Willie as well and help with some traffic up front and some issues there. But I haven't heard any complaints about the SRO program yet, so my assumption is it's going well. I have talked with all of them and they are really enjoying it. One of them even says that they get coffee runs on Friday, so that's exciting. I told them we're going to take that away if I hear anything bad, though. That's really about cities moving along. We're trucking. We're doing some big things. We've got a bunch of growth coming. Really excited about that. We'll see that over the next 10, 15 years, but it should start trickling in as soon as they get some permitting and stuff done. We'll see some new commercials, some new retail, hopefully some big new restaurants. This kind of puts us into a whole nother category here. So I'm rooting for like a Texas Roadhouse or something like that here in Telahoma. But it's good to be back. Good to see y'all. I don't think there's a meeting next month, so if I don't see you, happy Thanksgiving and happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you so much. And we did celebrate you last month and showed our appreciation for you for coaching and the being, you were actually having practice. So we appreciate you very much. Thank you so much. And we wish you great holidays also. And thank you for what you do. Very good. Personnel, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, the personnel changes for the month of November were placed in your board notes.
Yes, very good. And monthly financial report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, so Mr. Jordan is attending for the first time the Tennessee Association of School Business Officials Conference. That's all week this week. I know he will really enjoy that time of learning and collaborating with others who are in similar roles. So I am presenting the financial report in his absence and this is for the period ending October 31st. As a reminder to you, the current sales tax receipts are on pace with our budget. Hopefully, the upcoming holiday season will substantially boost those collections. Remember to shop local. Receipt of the city's annual allocation typically begins in November and receipt of property tax revenue typically begins in January. Right now, we are on pace as predicted.
Very good. Excellent. And we hope Mr. Jordan is loving his conference and representing. Is there anything else to come before the board? Seeing nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Gigi Robison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Didom? Very good. Meeting is adjourned.